What time you got Eddie?
Five o'clock.
What I've got. Hereby call the workshop to order at this time of the mayor and board of commissioners. There's no one registered to make comments on the public comment period, so we'll move on. First order of business, quarterly finance report, July 30th, 2024. Jessica.
Okay, we did get the fiscal year closed for June 30th, 2024, thanks to Sonya. Thank you, Sonya. I'll go along up there. I think this thanks to Landon should be showing up on the YouTube video also. General fund highlights, we had a good year. Revenues were actually 137% of what was budgeted. Expenditures were only 95%, so we brought more in than what we spent, which is always a good way to operate. We did have some COVID transfers in and out, so that 11 million number is much larger than what the budget was actually passed at because we had that ARPA money sitting in the COVID account, which was in an LGIP investment account. So we didn't have checks to write for COVID, so we transferred everything in the general fund every time we made a disbursement, basically, and then paid it out of the general fund. Our current sales tax and property tax collections were also above what was budgeted, and of course, interest was a lot higher than what we had expected it to be. The local option sales tax, this is just a graph showing you the kind of growth that we've had over the last 10 years for local option sales tax. We set a new all-time sales tax record, $545,287.38. These were collections from December, so this is, you know, traditionally your highest month. The prior record was the prior December, and this was almost a hundred, little more than $100,000 more than what that prior record was. So again, sales tax just keeps knocking it out of the park. I think part of this is inflation and that it's just a higher baseline now than what it would have been a few years ago. But certainly, I mean, it's almost $300,000 over what our year-end actuals were for last year. So that was more than what we had budgeted and more than what we expected it to be. The next slide is going to show you the difference in sales tax versus property tax. So about 10 years ago, the board made a conscious effort to try and make sales tax our highest revenue. Part of that came from a recommendation from the comptroller's office that cities who thrive on sales tax tend to have better resilience through recessions. So we did make a conscious effort to try and really recruit entrepreneurs and develop our business base. You can see in the last 10 years, this is a 15-year graph, but in the last 10 years, we've really made significant progress in that, which has enabled us to have our primary revenue source to be local option sales tax instead of just property tax. So this, rather than put this just on the backs of the property owners, you're doing it for all the tourists that come through Sweetwater, for people that rent, for people that come through. So sales tax, most people think of it as a little bit more equitable tax than property tax, and you can definitely see the increase in sales tax revenues versus property taxes remain fairly steady over the past 15 years, and that's intentional. These are our expenditures versus revenues for year-end actuals, and I'm showing you this slide so you can see the revenue slide is the blue line and the expenditures are the orange line. So there's been a couple of years, for example, the expenditures spiked in 15, 16. That's when we used fund balance to pay for the fire hall out on Highway 68. So that's why the expenditures were higher that year, and we made a conscious vote to take that out of fund balance. But pretty much every other year, we're bringing in more money than we're spending. So hopefully, we continue that path. That's, that's the way we want to be. That's the way the comptroller's office will continue to approve our budgets if we keep it that way. Breaking it into some of the other funds, State Street Aid, we did spend more out of State Street Aid than we brought in, which that was as budgeted. We were still under budget for expenditures out of State Street Aid. Part of that is because we didn't get as far along in some of the grant processes as we would have expected for last year. Most of those are TDOT grants, and we're kind of at the, at the helm of what TDOT says and when they authorize and when they issue notices to proceed. So they always take a little bit longer, and it's always a bit of guesswork trying to figure out whether it's going to happen in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. We still have a healthy fund balance in State Street Aid. You can see it's double what our revenues are for the year, so. And probably, a good chunk of that will be eaten up when we finish the multimodal grant, which is a 5% match. The Hawkins and Lindwood Road paving project, which we're going to talk about in just a second, that's a 20% match. And then we also have a TAP grant, so Transportation Alternatives Grant, and that one runs at 20%. So some of that fund balance needs to be reserved and set aside so that we have enough money to pay the matching fund on those grant projects. And most of those are for sidewalks. Tourism overview, still have a good fund balance in tourism. It's running right at 60%. Our revenues are $94,000 this year. We spent $102,000. All of that is funded by hotel motel tax. $35,000 of those expenditures, we're transferring back to the general fund every year to help offset for the cost of high-mass lighting. The big difference I wanted to point out about the tourism fund this year is the state of Tennessee has passed legislation that we now have to file a report at year-end telling them exactly what we spent the tourism dollars on. So I assume that that means at some point, they will come down with some kind of legislation saying, we do think this is tourism, we don't think that is tourism. We have, well, not we, but the general definition of tourism is bringing someone from a certain distance away into your town to spend money. So if there's an activity that lines up with that, we call it tourism. We take the murals out of here, we take the high-mass lighting out of here, and then we take festivals and event funding out of there. I'm very comfortable with the festival and event funding. I can't imagine that ever being something, especially with the data that we're tracking, that they would ever criticize. The murals and the high-mass lighting are a little bit more of a gray area, but I still feel very comfortable taking that out of tourism fund. The other thing that you're allowed to spend hotel motel tax on, according to our own ordinance, is economic development. So there's been a couple of times where we've taken some money out of tourism for economic development. For example, when we did some engineering costs associated with the expansion of the water and sewer lines out to the property, that is, I-75 development, that we did some extended infrastructure out there. We paid $15,000 of that out of the tourism fund because it's technically economic development. So infrastructure expansions like that can come out of that also. But just kind of a heads up, the state's kind of sticking its nose in that stuff, so at some point, we may have a little bit more stringent requirements on what can come out of the tourism fund. For right now, it's still within, if we think we're complying with our ordinance, then we're good. It may not always be that one. But we are home rule, so I do think maybe we have a little bit more authority in that because we were able to add our own hotel motel tax, whereas other cities who aren't home rule charters have to get permission from the state and pass legislation to be able to charge that hotel motel tax. Sanitation fund, so this is the, this is the garbage, basically, it's a garbage contract fund now. It is an enterprise fund, which means it's a business-type fund. It's just like the utilities are enterprise funds. So they have rates that offset what the cost of those expenses are. And the auditors in the state of Tennessee require that we set up, once we started charging a garbage fee, they did, they did require that we set this up as an enterprise fund, which means that they require that we maintain a certain fund balance. I think probably the minimum for that is 10%. We're getting kind of close to that 10%. We're at $39,000, and we're spending $318,000 a year in expenditures. Obviously, our revenue's not keeping up with expenditures, and the part that this slide doesn't show, but is important to point out, I think, we are, we are also funding all of the landfill expense, which this year was over $100,000, out of the general fund. So at some point, we are going to have to make sure this fund balance is higher. That can be done a couple of different ways. Either you increase the garbage fee to offset what the actual cost is of garbage pickup, or you transfer money from general fund over to sanitation fund. So next year, the garbage contract comes up in 2025, in April of 2025. We have a couple of options on that, but it's going to be a year that we have to look at that anyway. WCI will, of course, then be able to change the price to whatever they want it to be, so that'll be, that'll be something you just need to be thinking about. It could be a problem come next April because that's when that contract expires, and we're going to have to renegotiate with WCI. There may be an option to log into the county's contract because their contract goes another, I know it goes another five years and it may go another 10 years. So that may be something we need to talk to the county about also. But sanitation fund is the one fund that I feel like our fund balance is getting too low, and we're going to have to look at doing something different in the coming years. COVID fund overview, this one, the funds are supposed to be spent out by the end of December. So I'll tell you, I'll show you in just a minute, we had an overall decrease in the total cash in the bank, and that's because we're required to spend out this COVID fund money. We can't just sit on it and hold it. And there are certain things we can spend it on, but it's a pretty broad definition. Our beginning balance at the beginning of the year was 1.3, almost 1.4 million. We earned $54,000 in interest off that money this year, which again, was higher than what we had budgeted and expected because interest rates were higher. Expenditures, 1.3 million, 276,000 of that was given to the utility board for their water rehab tank, which we'll talk about in a minute. And of course, y'all will hear more about in your joint utility board meeting. We also purchased the land and the buildings that we're going to tour after this meeting tonight. That leaves fund balance of $145,000 in there as of year-end. That amount is still sitting in there now. About $35,000 of that is committed. We'd already put it in the ARPA spend plan, so 30,000 of that comes back to the city to pay for the cost of the Main Street Marketplace downtown because that was considered an economic development, which was an appropriate way to spend that money. And then 5,000 is going to the Sweetwater Merchants and Property Owners Association specifically for festival expenses because we could also spend that money on tourism. So other than that, 35,000 that's committed in the spend plan, and it's committed by the board. So like, if you all changed your mind and decided you didn't want to spend it on that, you have the leverage to be able to change that with the majority vote. But that other, aside from that 35,000, the rest, that 110,000, is interest earned over the last couple of years. So that is money that has not been committed to any particular cause, has not been discussed about how we're going to spend it, but that amount will sit in the COVID fund until you all tell me to move it and spend it on something else or put it in savings or whatever you think needs to happen. But we've earned about $110,000 over two years on, on the COVID money. Now, that's pretty much done now. We don't have, you know, we're not going to earn nearly as much on 145,000 as we were earning on 1.4 million, so we're not going to have that kind of interest earnings this year, but they'll still be a little bit coming through.
Yeah, so you're saying that we have to spend the COVID money by a certain time, but because this is interest earned, we can just sit on it?
To my knowledge, everything I've researched, every class I've attended, they've never said anything about interest earned. They didn't even technically require that we send this to a different fund. We just put it in a different fund because it was easier for us to keep track of and know exactly where that money was spent and how much interest was earned on it. Technically, you're allowed to put that interest in the general fund and just keep it. But I wanted you all to have a good, clear record of how that money was spent, what money we earned off of it, and so we kept it in a separate fund because of that.
Thank you.
These are our balances. This is a terrible slide. Any presenter would tell you never to put a slide like this with that much information up on screen, but I just wanted you all, this, this will be, it may already have been in your packet. Okay, so you have a printed copy of that also. But this basically is every bank account the city has, where that money lies, the interest rates on some of it, and where that, where that money all ties out. You'll see the total cash in bank at all funds at the very bottom. 7.1 million is the cash that we have in bank right now. That doesn't include receivables. So fund balance, when you see us reference fund balance in an audit or something like that, fund balance doesn't perfectly match up to cash in bank. Those are two different things. Fund balance includes things like accounts receivables and accounts payables. So those are two different terminologies that sometimes people use interchangeably, but they're not actually interchangeable. And I just wanted to point that out because I may say fund balance later on, and you'd be like, well, that number doesn't match. Well, it's not going to because it's, it's a different, it's a different thing that we're talking about. This is the screen that kind of breaks down that last slide. We reduced our cash in bank balance by $829,000. So our total cash that we have as a city went down $829,000 since last year, and that's because we spent $1.3 million out of COVID funds. So even though we spent $1.3 million out of COVID funds, our balance only went down $829,000. And that's because the general fund balance increased because we had excess revenues primarily from sales tax and grant funding. So that was a better, better number than I thought it was going to be. I wanted to talk a little bit about line item budget versus performance-based budget. We did this in our rural leadership class last month, so Eddie and John, and they would like to give a short presentation about the definition of this. Just kidding, just kidding. It was a really long session when we talked about this. So the state requires us to do a line item budget, which is where you sit down and you say, okay, this is the police department's budget, this is salaries, this is overtime, this is operating supplies, these are capital improvements. So that line item budget is required by the state. I personally prefer a line item budget because you can look at any city and kind of compare them and say, oh, okay, well, this is what they're spending on this, and this is what we're spending on this. And that, we're always going to have to do a line item budget because the state's probably always going to require that. But we also incorporate a performance-based budget primarily through our capital improvement plan. So these reports that I give you at the end of the year and our capital improvement plan that we do every year, they tie back and they present like a performance-based budget. So that intent is to provide a clear purpose in the funding, and it improves performance year to year. The complaint and the criticism that like, big cities have about line item budgeting is that you're just increasing it by a set percentage every year. And that's not really true because we go in and we individually look at every single capital improvement project and make sure that either we're completing them or that we still need them and what that cost will be for it. So these are some of the capital improvement projects we completed during the last fiscal year. Obviously, multiple departments needed vehicles, same thing with computer upgrades. We did do another phase in the Christmas light project downtown and another phase at Ingleman Park for Christmas lighting. Had a lot of really positive feedback, particularly about the Ingleman Park expansion of those lights there. We bought some new mowers in the parks department. The street department did the signage replacement. Last year, we had talked about the stop signs and how they weren't in compliance with what the highway manual requires them to be, so they put a lot of time and some funds into fixing those stop signs and getting them up to code. We added two new public murals. Again, that was from the tourism funding from hotel motel tax. Design work on the community center. We purchased four buildings with land through ARPA funding. And the thing I wanted to point out about that is those are assets that appreciate. So long-term on the city's finances, that's a great investment because those assets are always going to climb in value. That's not true about most of the stuff we buy. Most, equipment and stuff all depreciates, but those four buildings and the land should appreciate over time. Public Wi-Fi at Ingleman Park, I don't know that we even mentioned that, but we added public Wi-Fi at Ingleman Park. We paid down general fund debt of $416,268 during the last year. All of our pending lawsuits were either not filed, settled, or dismissed, so we have no pending lawsuits against us right this second. Capital projects continuing that. Library parking lot was developed thanks to the street department. That was great work there, and we've had a lot of positive feedback about that. And it coincided nicely with the growth at the north end of Main Street. We needed that parking at the time it was made, so that was very useful. We made upgrades to the Main Street Marketplace, added new fencing, asphalt, and lighting there. The downtown sidewalk project, that resulted in a newly sealed parking lot, a sidewalk with ballbouts, the crosswalk lighting, and the green space plantings. Of course, that one is ongoing. We've now received a grant through Main Street, so we'll be talking about that also. Our Main Street visitors, which I put in article that Haley printed for us in your packet for you to kind of look through. It was a nice little article. It was actually in a Nashville publication, Nashville Scene. Telling everybody, come Sweetwater. And last year, 191,700 people came to the Main Street District. That's the highest we've ever had. It's a 17%, 17% increase over last year. And if you look over the last three years, it's a 30% increase for, and I've ran the report for July through June. And a visitor is someone who comes from a different area code outside of 37874, and they spend at least 10 minutes in whatever the district is that we talked about. So it's not just a car driving through Main Street. It is someone who actually stops there at Main Street, so. And those are 191,700 unique visitors. So these are not repeat visitors because that goes up into several hundred thousand more. We created an IT department this year, and it is staffed by one lonely employee, but he is doing a great job. We also got cybersecurity through that, and we were able to get insurance coverage for cybersecurity, which we had not had in the past because we didn't meet the qualifications that were required for that coverage. In addition to that, well, I'll talk about the grant Landon got in just a minute. So in the codes department, we issued 81 building permits. That includes sign permits and a demolition permit or two, but mostly building permits. Six citations. People were cited into administrative hearing office hearings. We have multiple monthly cases to city court. Those are usually animal-related. We had 14 work orders issued that the street department helped us out on by either mowing or cleaning up properties that we then filed as a lien against that property so that we'll be able to collect that money. There were 12 liens placed on those properties for property maintenance and cleanup issues, and we were able to release two liens that those properties either sold or the people came and paid the lien off. So there's a good process for that now. Sam's department's doing a great job staying on top of that, and then Sonya kind of handles the financial side of that. So it used to be we would place these liens on, or we would do this cleanup work, and we would never get our money back for it. But now, we place those liens on the property, and with property going like it is, those liens don't stay on there all that long. Like, we're able to get them paid off and get some funding back for that. The police department, we added four full-time police officers that could not have come at a more vital time for that department. That, of course, included having to provide equipment for them and training. All of that was provided by grant funding, so we'll talk about that in just a second. We also completed the SRO program. As you all know, we were one of the first departments in the state that had a, an officer at every school. Now we have a full-time, post-certified armed officer that's also trained as a school resource officer, not just a school security officer at every school. In the fire department, we had many sets of new turnout gear funded by a private donation this year. The street department had paving projects on Lenore Street, Railroad Street, and various patching projects, which we talked last meeting about that updated sidewalk inventory and the updated pavement project. So if anybody wants more details on those, you can look at those displays over there. At the parks, Ingleman Park had 268 reserved events during, primarily between April and October is the busiest time. So that's people having birthday parties, showers, family reunions, that kind of thing. That's, we've never actually took the time to sit and count up those bookings before, so we had an intern do that this year, and we'll continue to do that, but that's going to be kind of our baseline. In the office, we felt like it was the busiest it's ever been booking Ingleman Park. Like, I don't know that there's been a Saturday up there that people aren't fighting over one of the millions. So I think this is a good baseline, but I think it's a pretty high baseline, too. Like, I feel like that was a lot of events for just those, you know, four or five months of busy activity up there. In the pool, we had 4,496 visits to the pool. And remember, the pool's only open like, nine weeks, maybe, 10 weeks, maybe? So it was crowded this year. It had higher revenue than we've ever had before at the pool. That's up about 400 visits from 2023 the year before. Utilities, Eric is going to go into detail with all this about you all, and I told him I wouldn't steal any of his thunder, so I did kind of. He told me what he wanted, you know, me to go ahead and put in here, and he'll go into more detail when you all do your joint meeting in September. We, they completed two water tank rehabs, the one on Linwood and the one on North Point. Right now, under bid, they have the 200,000 gallon tank on Monroe Street. It's going to be upgraded to a 1 million gallon glass line tank, which the glass line tanks, he can tell you more about that, but it's much less maintenance than what the traditional tanks are. He also relocated water electric and added the traffic lighting at Exit 62. There's a new bridge expansion beginning, and that should start within the next 60 days. There's new grant funding. Joanna and David, this kind of affects you all for the wellhead down at the city garage. That's actually owned by the utility board. Obviously, it's the protection of a water source. So they got grant funding through the utility board for providing better security around that wellhead, just to make sure there's nothing leaking in there or something that shouldn't be in there. So that, those upgrades will be happening in this next year. Okay, right this second, we have $10,402,276 in grants. If I add up all the grant funding between 2008 and 2022, we've had 7,329,236 grants. This year, we have had more grant funding, and some of these things have just closed in June. Some of them have just been awarded. We're in different cycles for all of these different grants. But we are juggling more grants right this second than we have between 2008 and now, so funding-wise. Now, many, many, many grants from the city are $3,500 grants, or $5,000 grants, or $25,000 grants, maybe $100,000 grant every once in a while. It takes a lot of $25,000 grants to get up to $10 million. So there's, there's, that, that, just because we have so much volume right now, it just means that the price tag was higher. A lot of that is because of stimulus money. A lot of that is the police grants that we got this year. We've had a good history of, of getting grants, and hopefully, that will continue. As of June 30th, 2024, we closed the Tennessee Arts Commission mural grant that we got, which was, that provided the mural on North Main Street, which was the Bee Haven one. And of course, the matching funds were provided from the mural fund and the tourism fund. We had the ADA changing table grant. Thank you to Sean Vestal for helping me get the pictures that we needed because that changing table actually needs to go in the bathroom at the new pool bathhouse. So at some point, we need to get with you to have that, those specs put in. The East Tennessee Foundation, which is a private organization, they gave us a grant to put a sound system at Sweetwater Elementary School in the auditorium. And we also, from that same organization, got a grant for the marketplace for $5,000 to help add the string lights and some of the improvements we made down there at the marketplace. TAP, our tree board, got a tree planting grant, and then we also do a revolving bulletproof vest grant. Each of those have been closed out for June 30th. Some of them, like the BPV and the tree planting grant, those are revolving, excuse me, so we'll keep applying for those, and you'll, you'll keep seeing those on the list. These are the newly awarded grants. Some of them we've talked about since the last quarter, but some of them are new. Norfolk Southern provided a private grant for reconstruction equipment to Sweetwater Police Department for $15,000. The police grant for SROs has been renewed by the state of Tennessee, so we did have to do a reapplication process. We were granted that funding again, and it's, it's forward-funded, so we should be getting that on the front end, which is unusual and very nice. It's 75,000 per officer is what it boils down to, so by the time we pay their salary, their benefits, their equipment, you know, last year, we had to buy vehicles for those officers because they were new officers to the department. That took quite a bit of that funding. The Tennessee Arts Commission mural, they have given us a $10,000 grant to make a mural that focuses on the 150 years of Sweetwater because 2025 will be our 150th celebration. It also provides $1,000 to the Sweetwater High School class. The Buzz ran an article about it this morning. They're going to do a mosaic of the 150th logo, and they're also going to create a bench for downtown with the students. So this is going to provide supplies for those projects. The Tennessee CyberSafe Program, this is the grant that Landon applied for. It's $22,000. That can be, it's going to be spent on cameras to provide extra security cameras for buildings that have computers in them. It also pays for the No More, the No Before software that we use that's required for cybersecurity training by our insurance carrier, but we were having to pay $4,500 out of pocket for that. Well, this grant that Landon applied for is going to cover that now, so we won't have to pay for that out of pocket. We can go through the state contract, and the state will cover that. And that's in addition to the 22,000. The 22,000 is actually the cash that we're getting, and then we also get the benefit of having the state provide the coverage for the training, which is about $4,500. FEMA Firefighters Assistance Grant, we're actually going to be open bids on this in the next meeting. This is for new fire hoses, which the fire department applied for and received that. In this next fiscal year, we think that we'll be completing the following grants. Those three TDOT railroad improvement grants, we talked a little bit in one of the last workshops about the boxes that are up on the lights. Those will be completed pretty soon. And then the, of course, we have to spend out the rest of the ARPA money by the end of December, so we'll definitely have those done. I also am really hopeful, I know I've told you this two years in a row, but I really do think we're going to get Hawkins and Linwood Drive resurfaced and striped this year. We have finally made it through right-of-way, and I think they're giving us permission to do bids. So hopefully, really before December, I hope that we are able to do bids on it, which probably means we're looking at spring before the asphalt plant reopens and we can actually pave it. But hopefully, before this fiscal year is over, we will have Hawkins and Linwood paved, and then we can start a new STP project that maybe five years from now will get something else paved. Norfolk Southern, oh, I already said that one. That was the reconstruction agreement for the police department. And then these two police grants, wow. Okay, we got 95,000 to add to officers that just covered payroll. And then we got $1,146,000 and change for a collaborative police grant. We partnered with Teleco Plains Police Department. We provided a vehicle. We had to have a collaborative partner, so there had to be another partner in it. So Teleco Plains, out of that grant, got a police vehicle and some radios. We had all of the radios paid for that we were going to have to pay out of our funds, so that was a huge savings to be able to pay for it with this grant funding instead, and also payroll for two more officers and several different pieces of equipment. That collaborative grant has rolled over, so we still have some money to spend this year out of that. It was a three-year grant. And then the formula base still has a small amount that we're paying for some of the equipment. The police department's getting primarily a vehicle for one of those new officers. So again, those grants, those are just unprecedented, the amount of money that they gave for policing, and all of that came through the state of Tennessee. And none of it had a match. It was all zero matching funds on both of those grants. So this is our debt summary. On the stormwater project from however many years ago, we have a balance of $596,633. Our annual debt payment on that is around 111. a balance of $596,633. Our annual debt payment on that is around 111. The TML bond issue, the capital outlay note, police, and capital outlay note for fire, all of that general fund debt totals 1.6 million. So technically, right this second, if we wanted to pay off all the debt of the city, we could. I wouldn't recommend that because our interest rates on these are great. They are way less than what we could get debt for right now. Our debt-to-income ratio is 17%, 17.5%. It's down from 24% last year, so we did pay down a significant amount of debt this year, a little less than 500,000. Education, so the Board of Ed has to have debt issued through the city. Their balances total 3.7 and change. And the utility debt's right around 12 million. Both of them have excellent debt-to-income ratio. I wouldn't hesitate issuing more debt for any of the three of us, based on our debt-to-income ratio, once interest rates come down a little bit. So our total outstanding debt citywide is $18 million. That's the lowest that it's been in a long time. So we are paying down debt every year and getting good returns on what, what we financed. So moving forward, I want to talk to you for just a second about Old National Bank. There's been some issues with the buyout, and they are trying to make it right, I think, but there's just been a real lack of communication about some things. Our internal control manual requires that two people from the city of Sweetwater authorize every transaction. Old National was making sweeps back and forth between our bank accounts with no authorization. So I have removed that money from Old National, and I've put it back in the LGIP account with the state of Tennessee where it's sitting. I get a higher interest rate with LGIP anyway. The, the account that we had it with at CapStar was matching the rate with LGIP, but it was something I had to stay on top of and tell them, hey, I need you to match this, and catch it and tell them to do that. So really, it's easier to leave it in LGIP anyway. It's backed by the state of Tennessee for everything over the FDIC, you know, limit. Old National has agreed to proceed with all of our regular general fund checking in our payroll account that is still with them. They've agreed to pay a higher interest rate, but they haven't committed to that rate yet, so we'll see what that is in the next little bit. We also had a CD with them that I just went ahead. It matured in August, so I cashed it out, and I put all of that money in the LGIP account also. So all of that money that's showing on your balance sheet that had been with the CapStar investment account is now been moved to LGIP and is earning interest with the state. Later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about the Biggs Home, the Community Center, and then the A Street Properties that we're touring. I guess what I was hoping to do with this presentation is give you enough information that you can make good decisions about what to do with, with the Biggs House, with the Community Center, with A Street Properties. On all of those, I would feel comfortable issuing debt when the interest rates are cut, which everybody expects to happen in September. I would also be comfortable taking some money from fund balance to fund some of those things. But I never want to get in the situation where we take so much from fund balance that we wish we would have borrowed instead. And again, it's different from being a private property owner or private homeowner. It's different from how we view debt, because debt for a government is supposed to spread the asset across the generations that are going to be using the asset. So one, they let governments finance things for 40 years instead of, you know, your normal 30-year term. And they want you to spread that across the groups of people that are going to be using. And we can get debt a lot cheaper than what your average person can, too. So debt's not necessarily a bad thing for city government, especially with the position that we're in now with our debt-to-income ratio. And I fully expect, if we're going to do this community center, when we start bidding it, hopefully next month, we'll have to issue debt. So hopefully, this is a good base of information for you all to kind of be thinking about that. And of course, we'll get way more into detail on that when we know exactly the pricing that we can do these projects for. But hopefully, this gives you the information you need. And obviously, stuff like this is also what I send to the, the bond boards whenever we're reviewed by Moody's, whenever we're reviewed by S&amp;P. I tell them that our board has all this training, like, we went through this training in the board meetings. So those are always good things, that they know that the governing board is fully aware of where the money is, what it, what it's earning, how much we owe, what the purpose of the, of the money is. So that's it. Does anyone have any questions about all of that?
Okay.
You're good.
Give me a break.
Breathe.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. So we covered the bank account. We received one proposal for the LPRF grant at the rec complex from Main Street Studios. Is there a motion to approve hiring Main Street Studios as the consultant, for the consultant from the LPRF grant?
So my second.
Any discussion?
Before we vote, I'll have to recuse myself because I am principal of Main Street Studios, so I cannot vote on that grant that we had applied for.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Moser's refused. Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Jinks?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Motion carries. With the addition of the city administrator's position, we need to adopt a pay scale. A proposal was in your packet. Is there a motion or discussion for this item? I didn't see one in mind.
I'll make a motion for, for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, now, based on the information that, that we received, is this one?
Yeah.
I've seen an email.
I've been over it, though.
Okay. Based on the information as, as I, I perceived it, moving forward with, with this position, we are well within the range of, of starting pay and top-out pay, from my understanding, based on the timeframe that we've been discussing this, this is already set within, within the budget for, for this coming year. There'll be no change to the budget. Is that correct assumption?
Okay.
I am, I'm more than, than ready to, to approve this, this change.
So basically, it's $25,000 a year raise, roughly, right?
Between three positions, if you have a question. The top, this position is $12,000. This position is $9,000. And this position is $6,000.
So that's, that's. Where did we get these figures?
These figures are based off of other comparable, actually, cities. You have this list right here?
No. All I've got's this.
So the, the range from comparable cities, like Etowah, like Loudon, like Dayton, Clinton, all of these, if, they range from 117 to 189. The average of these are, are 120. So we are, if my Sweetwater math is, is correct, in looking at moving forward, we're approximately $19,000 less than the average of all of these, these other cities. If you remember, a few years back, we took a look at pay across the board for overall city employees, everything from, from street to fire to police. And part of our discussion was, one of the hardest things that we do is finding good people, keeping good people, and then when we lose those good people, having to retrain. We made a decision then to make a sincere investment in our employees. This is just another layer and another level of making an investment in the administrative part of our city.
So, so we, the fire chief, police chief, they all get, they all get a raise, too, right? Is what I'm, is that what you're saying?
No, no. We, we looked a few years ago. I, I can't.
This is what it is now. I don't have anything but this.
The only ones that are changing are this one, this one. That one, that is the office staff that is affected by this pay scale change. The rest of these, we already voted on that pay scale, 2022, maybe?
Just a couple of years ago.
Two years ago. So we have not done a new study on any of these positions. We haven't done a study on the ones affected by the city administration.
So what I am asking is, where are these figures? Is this, did you all sat down? Did somebody sit down and go over these? Or is this just a general?
These.
I mean, somebody had to come up with these figures that said, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this.
That, that's, that's what we're doing right now. That, that's what we're doing and discussing.
I know that, but who come up with starting pay 10159, top-out pay 106? Where did that come from?
That information came from a culmination of a comparative with all these, all these other cities, plus a basis of where those positions are now.
See, I don't have that, that piece of paper you've got there.
It's, it's, it's in our packet.
It's not mine.
It's, it's in, in that packet.
Do you want me to make that up?
Yeah.
I could have overlooked it. So this is an addition, I guess what I'm saying is, why do, why do we, and I'm all for the girls getting a raise, don't get me wrong, but what happens to our regular city employees? We give them a 3% raise once a year. Is that not kind of cutting them short?
No. That's what I, that's what I was trying to, to explain, is, a couple of years ago, we looked at every.
Right.
Department except for the administrative department.
So we didn't take that, when we did that, we didn't take them into consideration?
Correct. They weren't included in the pay scale study.
But they still got the 3%.
Well, the 3% is just a.
Just standard thing.
It's, it's a.
Cost of living.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the other layer of that mayor was, we made a conscious effort to, across the board, pay a little bit more for the entire kind of city department and raise the level of pay to be comparable or a little bit more than the surrounding cities so that we could retain these folks.
Right, I really, yeah.
So those, those actions were taken with all other departments except for this one. Now, we're, we're looking at this particular one to do the same thing. But it's coupled with bringing on the new city administrator role and collectively moving, moving forward.
Okay. So the girls didn't get a, they didn't, no consideration when you, we had to scale up and all that, the girls didn't get anything?
That, that was not.
Okay, alright.
That was, that was not taken into effect.
That answered my question. Alright, got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Jinks?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now, under the workshop discussion, first, the emergency call-out service, we contract with HyperReach. They have contacted us about changing the contract to unlimited due to our call volume. Jessica, you want to go with this?
So we have had the same contract. It was Code Red, and then HyperReach bought out Code Red. They honored the prior contract. We've had the same contract. I think the cost of the contract annually is around $2,950. We pay that every year in July. This year, HyperReach, and the contract is not unlimited. It's for a certain number of, not really minutes, but a certain number of calls. So they called us, they said, you guys are way over what your normal volume is for the last year. They're probably right. With the winter storm back in January, we made several calls about that, and all of those calls were calls to everyone that was signed up, which is around 4,200 people. So that right there probably kind of put us over what the limit was. And then we had subsequent calls about garbage pickup being delayed and all that related to those. He says if they did it on a per-minute or per-call charge, it'd be like $12,000 in overages. He said, I'm not trying to call you and collect $12,000 in overages, but I'm telling you, we need to amend your contract. And he offered an unlimited contract for, I think, around $5,900. So I told him I would present that to the board, and he's happy to come and talk to you all or go through what it is. It has been the same cost for 10 years. I do, if we're going to continue to use HyperReach, which I do think it is a good tool, and we have used it, I do, I would prefer an unlimited plan because I don't want to have to be sitting there thinking, maybe I should only tell this to half the people that signed up for it instead of, or like, and if there are times when maybe we're paving a street or something, we will only send the call out to that street that's being paved. But almost everything we do is an all-call to everybody that signed up for it, because we don't use it unless we need to tell everybody about something. So something for you all to think about. We, I didn't advertise this for tonight's meeting for action, so we can either put this on the September meeting agenda, or I can go back to him and say, we've already passed the budget for the year. If you're good, we'll consider this next year for the budget. Do you all have a thought on that? I think it's around 29, 50, 29. It's a little less than $3,000 a year. And he's wanting to go to five, somewhere in the five range for an unlimited plan. And I, I mean, I do think we can stay with the contract we have, at the price we have. He's still offering that, but then we'd have to pay a lot more attention to how many calls we're sending out throughout the year. And again, he's, he's willing to come or call in or talk to you all, too, if you'd rather talk to him directly.
How many people do we have signed up for this?
4260, somewhere around there. So 4,260 people are signed up for it. The weather alerts are unlimited already, so like, we got four flash flood warnings in July, which is super unusual. But those are unlimited anyway. So if they send out tornado watch, flash flooding, something like that, we don't get charged any extra for that. These are just the ones that we choose to generate. So.
Have we had that many calls?
Well, not really. We've only used it 16 times in 2024, which doesn't seem like, I mean, that's twice a month. But because we're sending it out every time to 4,200 people, it generates quite a few calls. So, and texts.
What's the stability or the dependability of this? Because I don't remember getting 16 outreaches from HyperLake this year. And I've seen, I've seen a lot of people talking that, well, this was 30 minutes ago, and I'm just not getting it. I think that's some things we need to consider if we're going to do an unlimited plan. It don't matter if it's unlimited or not, if the flash floods already washed us down the drain.
So the flash flood.
Sometimes you get on there.
So out of the 16 that we've sent, I think four were automatically generated, and the other 12 we chose to send. Probably five or six of those are for garbage pickup delays or whatever. And then the other five or six might have been for the winter storm and the, you know, service updates and stuff related to that. Not saying we couldn't cut back and use it less. We could. But I also don't feel like 16 times in a year is like overusing it. So, I don't know. I, I do agree, we've had several people, people with much more knowledge than I have, saying that, you know, from the, the, the weather alerts, like flash flood, are automatically generated by the National Weather Service and tied into the system. So I don't know whether that's, I don't know who to blame for that, is what I'm saying. I do know that sometimes it takes a long time for those calls to get out. Like, I can sit there and watch how many calls are being flashed out at the same time. Sometimes, I mean, they, they let it cycle for 24 hours. Now, I always cut it off before then, because no one wants a message a day later than if it's, we can wait a day to tell them. I can just put it on Facebook. But I do, I do have some concern about, in an emergency situation, how quickly that information is getting out. So.
I don't think a lot of it's getting out $5,900 quick.
Yeah. I will say, five or six of these, like, for the garbage, which there's been a lot of garbage updates this year, that's a whole nother issue. But the garbage updates, it's, I, it's not an emergency situation. They don't have to know within the next 10 minutes. Um, but the ones that are for emergency situations, more speed would definitely be a better option. So, I mean, there may be someone else that does this kind of service.
I was gonna say, when do we have to make a, a final decision to move forward?
Well, he just sent me this email this last week, so I feel like we have some time to talk about this and, and talk with him, and, like I said, he offered to call in or come to one of our meetings and, um, talk to us about it, um.
Why don't you invite him to a meeting?
Okay.
Does, does, I was gonna say, can we, can we put it on next workshop, or is that too far off?
No, I think that's fine. I think as long as he knows we're making some kinda progress on it.
Put him on September workshop.
And have him basically come and do a presentation, so we can ask questions?
See what we're getting for the fifty-nine hundred. What was that other one we met with?
Code Red, but Hyperreach bought Code Red out, so.
All right, any more questions about this? Everybody good with that September workshop? Okay, I asked this item to be put on the agenda for the, just to look at discussion. Rex Ball has presented. Oh, excuse me, okay. Biggs House, Commissioner Mosher, he's, uh.
So we, we talked about the moving forward with the, the Biggs, uh, house repair. I wanna shout out to David and the Street Department, they were the ones that helped us, uh, kinda clean up, uh, making the lot look good again. Um, the, uh, the thing that we were going to look at first is, before anything gets done, we've, we've gotta have walls. Um, we had touched base with a local, uh, mason that, uh, is, is very, very talented individual and can do the work. Um, he gave us a price to do the work, but unfortunately, it was over the threshold, uh, that we, we now have to, uh, put, put it out to bid. So, I'm working on writing a scope from the structural engineers' report to basically do an advertisement for bid. Um, hopefully, um, this amount or less will come in, but like I say, the amount that we did get put us over that threshold, it's over twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, I'll just, I'll just say that, I won't share, uh, their number. But I'm in the process of getting that scope of work written, and Jessica and I talked about getting it advertised for bid in the next two to three weeks, and possibly getting the bid back before the end of, of September. So that's, that's where we're, where we're at. But we are, we are moving forward, it's just the number was, was more than we could move forward with without a, a public bid. So that's, that's the update on the Biggs House. Any more questions, comments, concerns?
It didn't take people long to notice that some things are going on down there.
And very positive.
Absolutely.
Very positive. They, they do, they do want us to save it, was the comments coming back.
Everybody I've talked to, glad we're doing, doing something with it.
Yeah.
Uh, most everybody wants to know what we're gonna put in it, and I think we kinda discussed that in general, which is just about anything. I think we need to keep it standing first.
Yes.
Then we'll put something in it. Is that it, Sam?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. Rex Ball approached me on a piece of property out on New Highway sixty-eight. You've got some pictures. Kinda the overall outlay, fifty-one acres. Uh, we talked about this, that, uh, we need more park and rec land, and, uh, there's just really none available inside the city. So he approached me with this, and I'm presenting it to you with fifty-one acres. There is a house on it, I think there's a barn and a shed. He is willing to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars down. Total cost is eight hundred thousand dollars financed over five years at three percent interest. Semi-annual payments. He would retain the right to live in his house onsite for five years, and owner agrees to maintain property during that five years' time. So I told him I would present this to you. I think it's something we need to consider, because there's just no land like this available in Sweetwater. I don't know who's been on it, but it's got two or three beautiful sites on it. And, uh, Jess and I, and John, so she can get an idea of what we're looking at, we're gonna drive, anybody else that wants to go, we're gonna drive over it and look at it, probably take some more pictures. But I just wanted to present to you this, to see if you had any question, uh, any comments, uh, your way of thinking, is it something we wanna pursue, or just say, no, we're not interested? Uh, I don't think we'd ever get another opportunity to buy this kinda property inside the city limits at this price, at this interest rate, uh, at this location.
Mayor, do you, do you know if, if Rex has, um, um, a topography layout of, of this site? I know, uh, there's certain areas that it rolls pretty, pretty steep.
There's some of it, yeah.
It, the, if, if he could-
I don't know if he's got that.
I was gonna say, could, could you ask him?
Yeah.
I'd be interested in, in seeing that.
Well, it's, I do know up on, uh, it's got two ingresses, three ingresses. One on Monroe Street, two on New Highway sixty-eight. It does have water, and it does have sewer. Uh, there's a spring on it that would make, uh, I used to play there as a kid. Uh, beautiful spring down amongst some trees, it's grown up right now, that would make a beautiful park. But the best thing to do, Sam, um, if you had a chance, is to go look it over.
I, yeah, I, I can, I definitely know, know the property and can go look it over, but my, my curiosity is the way, the way the land physically lays, um, it's a, it's a, not a ravine, but it's, it's a pretty steep uh, cut that goes through there, and my curiosity would be based on the most flat usable rolling part, and if we did something with it, say, we, we looked at this to, to use it as, as Parks and Rec. When you put a, a ball field on it, you know, that's a lot of acreage that has to be a, a pancake flat. So I would just want to, to look at the usable acreage based on, you know, cubic yard type excavation. Um, but just ask Rex if he, if he has something like that, I'd be interested to know.
If anybody wants to come, we're going, we're going tomorrow, just drive it over. I wanted Jess to get a overall view, and John, um, look it over and, uh, I think it'd be something to consider, to look at, kick the tires on it. Uh, now'd be a good time to do that, so I'll see if he's got anything like that, Sam.
Thank you.
If he, you can get that at Courthouse or-
Well, um, he-
John, can you, can you get something like that?
I know, I know he'll have a boundary, but as far as the topography. Yeah.
Yeah, it does have the topo stuff on it, um, but it does have, I think he wanted to document where that zoning line was defined from R one and R two, it splits over, but it didn't have any topography on it, it's basically the boundary survey with, with that, delineation of R one and R two. But I don't, as far as any topo maps, uh.
He might be, if he doesn't, he, he being a surveyor might have access to Li, LiDAR information.
Now, he's, don't have his license anymore, I don't think. Okay. Anyway, we'll discuss this at a later date, we'll bring it back up.
Thank you.
Any questions, well, I'll try to answer them, if not, why, he, he can answer them.
Sorry, y'all, I forgot the Cigna rebate. It was supposed to be at the end of my report, and I got too excited about all those numbers, and I ran right over it. So, um, believe it or not, Cigna is throwing back a rebate again this year of over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, my recommendation would be to follow kinda the precedent we sent last year. Go ahead and refund a portion of that back to the city employees that paid in deductible. You know, everybody that, that was here for that plan year and is also still an active employee, refund them, and then save maybe thirty-three percent of it for, in case we have a premium increase in the future going forward. Last year, we did make a motion on it, so I brought it back to you all again, because I don't, I don't know that we necessarily are required to vote on it, cause the law tells us what we're allowed to use it for. But I feel more comfortable with you all voting on it, since we, um, did it once before. This was supposed to be part of the quarterly financial report, so I don't know if we need to put this on the agenda for September to vote on it, or, John, I don't know, can that be part of the quarterly financial report, since that was advertised at the call meeting, or not really? Well, we have, we didn't actually take a vote on it, I don't think. So, since we didn't actually do a vote on the quarterly report now, we could do a vote on it now, or we can add it to the September agenda. So, whatever y'all are comfortable with.
Put it on the agenda for Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, I, is it, does it need to be announced? Is that gonna be something that?
Not necessarily.
Okay, we give back, uh, how did we do that last year? We gave back their portion of the ones that's paying the premium and?
And then deductible amounts.
Three years?
We gave three amount, three years of deductible amounts. So this year, I would say, we could afford to do two years of deductible, and then put the other thirty-three percent back, in case we have a premium increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that be on?
Make a motion to do that? I moved to give back two years of deductibles out of the signal refund.
We can, because technically that was part of the quarterly financial report, I just kinda skipped over it, um, cause this is for last year's. So everything, it ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. Alrighty. Our September meeting will be on Tuesday, September third, due to Labor Day, holiday next week, so it'll be a week from tomorrow. On the agenda, we will have minutes and distributions, we will review an application for the liquor store to be located at Avita Salon, is that right?
Used to be Avita.
Next to the Regions Bank. The Liquor Committee reviewed the application today. Chief Byram, do you have anything to say about this?
Yes, we look at, uh, everything looks fine on so far, we just got your background checks, and we'll have something presented in the next meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. We will have appointments for the Tree Board and Building Code Board of Review. We will have bids for the FEMA equipment grant on hoses to open an award. We will have a resolution on streets to review. John, uh, what is this? Do you wanna update the board on that?
There's recorded back in nineteen twenty-four of a lot of a lot of pieces of property up at Patton Street. Y'all may be, this is behind the Oakland View, went up to the old school there. And a lot of people who own those properties have come to assume that those are city streets, just because they were platted. The plat was, actually had a brand on it that said it was just a, an auction plat. It's never been approved by the city, streets have never been accepted. But there's a number of them that we have paved and maintained over the years. And that's one of the two ways that the city can actually accept and adopt streets, is just through usage. So, David and I went up there, and we identified those that had been paved and used, maintained by the city. And those are described in this resolution. And I, I passed out just before the meeting, the, the tax map of that area. When you look at the tax map, you can see that there's a huge, there's probably a dozen streets and alleys that were laid out in that plat, that have never been opened. There's not houses facing those streets, the city's never accepted them. And so what this does is it, it formally accepts those streets that we have actually already adopted by usage. And it makes clear that the rest of those unopened alleys and streets are not city streets. We're not responsible for them. Now, people have bought lots there, and the people who own that have got easements by their deeds, and by the references to this plat, they've got easements across there. If they need to open up a driveway or a private road on those, they can. But we're already having people wanting us to clear out trees that have fallen across these boundary lines and across the these unopened streets and alleys. And it really would be a huge burden if we took all of that on. Not to mention, if these had been laid out more recently, whoever laid out the subdivision would have had to have put those streets in or posted a bond to do it. And it's just, it's just a historical anomaly that, that this is designed to clean up. If you, if you take a drive up Patton Street and follow these directions and look on there, you can see very easily what I'm talking about.
All right. We will, um, receive a, we have received several requests on the use of these buildings that we're getting ready to go tour. Uh, Jessica, you wanna review any of these and, uh, talk about any of these properties before we walk through them?
Sure. I think I included the, in your packet, the email from MTS, kinda describing these situations, and what MTS said we, whether it fit the public purpose doctrine, which has come up before on these buildings. Um, so some of the local sports leagues, uh, and cheerleading, occasionally they'll use the basement at City Hall if it's raining or something like that, and they can't practice outside. Um, some of them have asked about using that, those facilities, either, and primarily, the questions have been about the two blue buildings. So there's a blue building on A Street, and then the blue building that's the community center building. Obviously, once construction starts at the community center building, we would not be letting anybody use it, but in the interim, if somebody's wanting to, you know, throw balls or pitch, pitching lessons or, um, cheerleading, those roofs are high enough to actually do those things indoors. So I sent that to MTS, um, she said that certainly complies with the public purp- purpose doctrine. Um, she kinda mentioned we might wanna make sure they have insurance and waivers, which if they're already leagues operating inside Sweetwater, we already know that, we've already confirmed that through the Parks and Rec Commission. So that was one of the first uses that was questioned about. Um, the second one is not an issue anymore, it was concerning a business owner who had a temporary need for storage. That's no longer an issue, I sent him another contact, and he was able to get it with a private business owner, so. Even, MTS did say that technically could fit if we needed it to. And then also, Alan Sibley had made a request about using it for local arts organization. Um, and I responded and told him that tonight, we were going over the community center, uh, plans, and he could kinda look and see some of those for himself, and I think some of that property will end up fitting the needs for that art organization also. But MTS did say, both of those- But MTAAS did say, both of those uses were allowed, and it would just basically be up to the board. So, my question kind of is, do you want me to let those people use it and reserve it? Kind of, what I'm thinking is, use the same Google Calendar that we use for Ingleman Park, and I don't think it'll be the volume Ingleman Park is, I say that now. Um, but, um, are y'all uncomfortable with that? Do we, the, the community center building is being cleaned this week, so, um, I feel more comfortable letting people in there, between now and the time that we actually start, uh, construction there. Um, that other building, we may want to look at tonight as we walk through, and see if it's appropriate for anybody to be able to use it, is it safe enough? Is it going to cause a problem? But I, I just, before I made any plans about that, I wanted to get y'all's feel about it. Do you want them not to be touched at all? Do you want us to let some of these local people use it, if it can, if it can help? Especially the ones that already have leagues in Sweetwater, and have already complied with sending insurance requirements and all that stuff, or we, and waivers on the participants. Um, worse weather is about to come up, you know, like, it's about to be that season where it's cold, or it's rainy, or something like that, so I know some of them would probably make use of it, if we allowed them to.
Will there be like rules as to who can and cannot use it, or would it just be called?
For me, I, in my head, this sounds like a good idea, it may not work out that way, but in my head, I'm thinking, any of the people that have already gone through the Parks and Rec Commission and complied with whatever their rules are for using the outdoor fields, it makes sense to me that they could also use an indoor facility, if we deem it to be appropriate. So, and, and, and anybody who's not in compliance with that, but might want to use an indoor facility, they would go before the Parks and Rec Commission and, and turn in their insurance, and show that they're signing waivers on the participants, and then Parks and Rec could approve that. To me, that's the governing body, that it would make sense to, to vet those kind of people, and that way, it's not just a wide open field that anybody and everybody can come use this city asset. Um, also, that, the community center building is coded, and we can actually change that code if we need to. So, we could do a public code that we give out to people, and then we could change it ever so often, to make sure not everybody can just get in there whenever they want to. Um, I wanted to kind of check with you all first, and make sure there was no problem with that, and we can talk more about it when we walk through it. And, and if that's the case, we can kind of defer to Parks and Rec Commission, and let them kind of decide, is that, is that a good person to allow their group to meet in there? And if they're already using the outdoor fields, it makes sense to me to let them use the indoor ones. But, we can talk more about it as we walk through them. But we have had those three official requests come in and ask for use on that.
I think just, um, looking as we walk through tonight, just life safety type issues, obviously, using a field, you're wide open, you're out, out in the open, but liability of inside use based on just emergency lighting.
Sure.
That, that's what comes to mind for me.
I understand that the Park and Rec, uh, was interested in the office building. Sean, uh, is that still something Park and Rec's interested in?
Possibly, yeah.
One of the other things that we had Pidge and Eric go down there and look to about storing, right now, we have Christmas lights in three different buildings, and decorations for Halloween over at Parks and Rec, in the back room, behind where the fire department used to be. And we've got Easter decorations in the basement here at City Hall, and so, all of that stuff is in different places, so that building might be a good place to consolidate that, and also have a place where we don't have to carry stuff up and down the steps. Like, you can just back a truck in and load it up and leave. And for Parks and Rec, there's four bays there for trucks, whereas right here, there's only three, so, I mean, there's, I do think there could be an internal use for that building. Um, again, something we can talk about as we walk through it tonight.
But that, if you took the decoration and stuff out there, would that not free more space for Parks and Rec to stay over here? Is it totally different?
Most of that stuff's in the basement.
To be utilized differently.
Decoration and stuff, is anything over there?
Yeah, we have Halloween over there, we have the vendor signs over there.
Our hall over here has Halloween and Christmas decorations that go to each park. Main street decorations are in the basement here. And for the other rooms across the street, we've got Easter. And some Christmas decorations.
Needless to say, every time something happens, we're like, where do we put this? Where are we going to try and find it? So, if there's a way to organize it better, we might, we could probably make better use of it.
It would make more sense to me to move all of that stuff to one location. And then free up that space, whatever's over here, for Parks and Rec.
I guarantee you, Pidge would love that, if it was all in one place.
If they need to modify something over here, then modify it to fit their need. It just may
Okay. Talk about this at a later date. Okay, Commissioner Mosier, you've got a design on the community center, which we need to look at, can't wait to look at it. We're going to move to the table, Sam's going to lay it out, so after we look, we will adjourn and go have a tour. We are adjourned.
I do at my desk, but all I had was tape right here, so, so you got duct tape there. It's all I had to work with over here.
So, what, what we have done, uh, two, twofold, is we've got architectural, we've got structural, uh, we just got the survey completed, so we sent that off to Sible. We will bid, uh, first pass on mechanical, plumbing, and electrical, uh, this young gentleman right here is Ben Bryce, the wind stream studio, he's the one doing the heavy lifting on the majority. It's, um, as far as, as layout, but, um, what we wanted to show you guys, just kind of out of the, out of the gate, is the, the multifunction use that we are going to get out of this, this facility. So, if, if you look at, at the green elements, those would be classroom-type use elements. Um, as far as this one, we are going to install an accordion wall-type setting, so that you can have one very large, uh, classroom, and it, it reflects between the large and, and the smaller. Uh, as far as, uh, each area, we set that particular room up as a exercise studio, where yoga, uh, aerobics, uh, anything kind of, um, athletic class-type setting could, could come in and be taught. Um, so, we've got, like, in this areas, changing room, and storage, and then just, just benches, uh, for, for that area. Um, this, if, if you think about it in, in site plan, the visitor center depot sits here, so this will be the front of the building for the main entry. We'll have a receptionist and an office area in, in one main area. We've got a smaller lounge area that could flex as a smaller classroom, or a hangout space as well. We've got a kitchen setup for community, uh, classes as far as kitchen. We've also got that set up for use in catering, um, uses for, for the larger area. Then, of course, we've got a set number of restroom, uh, facilities, fixture count, that we'll have to have with the number that we will have here. But first and foremost, uh, the facility of the main bay is large enough to house basically a high school volleyball court. So, that will give us another gym, um, court facility, where obviously, you can do full court, but we can also take two additional goals on either side, so we can do, do half-court play. If you notice the thinner line in here, that would be a regulation volleyball court as well. So, so we would have high school, junior high, and now this, which would give us three basketball courts within the, the city system. Obviously, Brown has one, I can't remember if that's regulation, but we would have three, uh, high school regulation-type courts, along with three volleyball as well. So, that would lend itself to tournaments with three courts available, rotating with, within the, the city. The other area that I want to point out is a large, uh, storage room, and we can jump up, jump in here at any time. We have a large storage room here at the end, and then a smaller storage room here at the other end. One of the things that is a driving force behind a community center like this is how many different uses can we get out of this building? So, so you got basketball, you got volleyball. These bleacher setups here are actually, they come in a component, is it seven, fifteen?
Uh, yes, fifteen seats.
So, they're actionable, actually, uh, movable, so you can set it up and break it down. So, in, in this storage room, we have enough room to put these out, break it down, and store. So, it would be completely wide open. Uh, the seating capacity, do you remember the seating capacity for the bleachers alone? Three hundreds?
Yes.
So, we have three hundred bleacher seats that can be set up and, and taken down. Alright? And all be stored within this area. So, yeah.
It's a while for, we want to make this into an auditorium, too.
Can you take that into consideration?
Yes.
Okay.
So, hang, hang, hang with me.
So, what, what we've tried to do is actually give you all of the options. So, there's gym and volleyball, but in that same area, based on flooring, based on striking, we could have three pickleball courts. So, within that same area, you could, you could have pickleball courts. Alright? So, there's the third. Okay? With, with curtains, uh, we could subdivide it, we could actually create a smaller venue for half of this, and do a catering affair that we could use the kitchen and, uh, based on this setup, you could house two hundred and twenty-four, it's two twenty-four, twenty-eight round tops, with eight, eight chairs apiece. Or, obviously, you double that, you could have almost five hundred, and fill up the whole, the whole setting. Once again, all of these elements shown, like the bleachers, like the tables, can be stored. So, here's another point that I want to point out, that, that had been done in this facility, would be the breakdown of these bleachers being stored in there with still area left over. So, when the tables come out, uh, the bleachers go, go back in. Okay? So, not to forget You're just way ahead of your time, weren't you, Mary? So, with this particular, uh, layout, you can have a stage performance area, and was it sixteen by?
Eight by sixteen.
Eight by sixteen, which, um, you would have when you finish, a sixteen by thirty-two stage area. And that's just the floor that we showed, we could, we could have another platform to even increase that. But this seating capacity, just the way we've got it laid out, and you can see, we've got a little bit of area growth, but what's showing right here is seating for four hundred and sixty-two people. So, you've got one, two, three, four, five venues.
Is there access to props to come in?
One of the things that we've, we've thought about doing that is if we set up a stage, we could hang a curtain system that would kind of hide and give you a backstage, uh, that could be suspended.
Yeah, but is there, uh, access for theatrical props, uh, on the backside of that, uh, stage area?
So, here we have overhead doors, things could be brought in and out of, of that area, and then obviously, we've got man, man door and belt door. But these are existing bays, that it, it could be, like, a curtain system that could be brought in behind the curtain scenario. Yes. And, and once again, all of these pieces and parts and components, like I say, other than the striking of, of the floor, would be mobile units that could be set up and taken down. So, there's the, there's the five different uses, and obviously, we could probably think of a few more that would, would be.
I'm suggesting it be a sixth reason.
Sure.
Uh, President of East Tennessee Art Center, for a long time now, we've been wanting to have a facility to, um, have, um, art camps for children, which we've done throughout, um, the East Tennessee area, and particularly, Monroe County. But, uh, one of the facilities that we've been trying to do is have art shows.
Okay.
Not only for, uh, schools, but for, uh, local artists, and also national artists, to bring them in, and to exhibit, and to, uh, and to explain the work, and, and have many more activities related to the visual arts.
And, and that, that particular venue obviously could be a large expansion area that we could
Well, just thinking of wall space and, uh, professional hanging art system, that sort of thing. You've, you've got everything else there for catering, to, to have a reception, uh, and, you know, a national show, uh, would be, uh, would be a great feature for this.
One of the, one of the things with that, um, would be, with the existing base system that's there, we've got a lot of glass, we could definitely create that venue for what we, when we were, I don't know if they still have them, when we were in our, art and architecture school, the art and the architecture within the same building. They had a basically mobile, uh, art displays that were basically on, on casters. So, I mean, you could have a, a wall that was two feet thick and sixteen feet long, that you could move around.
I'm familiar with that type of system, yes, against, you know, storage spaces.
Sure.
The art shows, uh, I would consider, would be for, for, as well. If anyone's interested, I've got information.
Sure. Uh, I mean, if, I think we have the script footage to do a lot of different things. And I'm more, you know, if you give me a problem, I'll immediately try to, try to solve it. But there, there in line is kind of the multiple use. Uh, obviously, this is, we're kind of the construction document set, which, obviously, it's door size, and it's window size, and it's, it's, it's the same footprint, but it's the construction document side of it. The part that we didn't touch on, on the upper level, if you go up the stairs, we'll have two smaller classrooms as well, up there, and then the lounge, kind of hangout, flex, uh, space with two, uh, two restaurants.
Is there a walking track on the second floor?
It's not on the second floor, but I just said, uh, we just forgot. This dash line represents five or six feet. I want to say it's five. But you could have a game going on, you could have bleachers set up, but then you can still have a walking circus around the activity. But you could have a game going on, you could have bleachers set up, but then you can still have a walking surface around the activity all, all at the same time. So, so that's what that, I'm glad you said that, because that was something to point out. But it would be just surface. Um, we talked about, you know, the possibility of a, of a, um, and we'll have to get with structural. The thing about metal, pretty new metal buildings is those, the weights are so thinly, you know, there's no margin for addition. I don't know if we could suspend something, but we definitely have the floor space for, for the walking there. We, we did think about that.
Only question that I got so far, um, on the, on the business. If we do the design on the floor, say if we do this design, how would we get this done?
Well, you would, you would have to set it up, obviously something that would breathe well. I mean, it would be a lot of lines. Uh, now, there are floor surfaces that can actually be put, put down and, and taken up as well.
Or you could just have these great things.
Yes, overlap.
Here and just color coded or something to whatever you're playing, you just figure out what you're playing on.
You're using the yellow lines versus the blue line versus the red line. Well, I'd like to say that the, the possibilities, uh, I don't want to say are endless, but it would be six venues, uh, of, of use, uh, throughout the year. Very, very easily. You know, not to, not to mention the classrooms and the exercise and the classes. That is, that's additional, uh, storage for. We, we, we actually do, these work with the tables, tables and chairs here.
Yes, yeah, basically the, the, you know, tables all eight chair doggy, to have the house, you know, eighty-four chairs, I think it was. It would, it would reside in there, you know, with chairs or without chairs. If it's an empty doggy or not, there's still a spot for it, so it would be able to just stay there.
The other, the other aspect of what, what we're thinking about, uh, turning quickly to kind of the, kind of the structural elements of, of it all, is everything that we're doing in addition would be a concrete, uh, uh, base and re block. Uh, obviously, it's, it's not the prettiest thing, but in a community center like this, it's gonna take the wear and tear. So all the walls that you see in that, in that realm would basically be, all the conditions would be age, senior, and youth area laws. So it, it serves as the structure, but it also serves as the division of space. And with that, we were trying to be as economical as, as possible, especially the wear and tear.